Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence for you. Call the meeting to order. Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order. First, we've got approval of minutes for August 6, 2018. Those are in your packet. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. This is the minutes, right? It sounded like I only came through executives. So Jean White was present for exec and second. I was ten minutes late. And I didn't miss anything ten minutes earlier than Jean.
Okay. Correction on the minutes.
Also, on old business and new business, I brought up quite a bit that there ain't nothing bad in there.
Jean, do you recall? Did you make a motion? Because if there wasn't an action taken, it really doesn't typically appear in the minutes. Okay.
Any other corrections, additions to minutes? Not on entertaining a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you. Next is August 2018 financial report.
I had a question about, what's the last line item? It's Pitt &amp; Frank LLC. And I tried to look at the other notice to see what the description was, but it said the same thing. So what exactly was that? If you don't mind.
Oh, yeah, Trey.
So it's on the bills paid August 2018. It's the very last one. It's check number 230638.
It looks like it's showing up on debt service. I was going to actually ask the same question.
That's where we got the property down on Third Street.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Sorry.
Yes. Any other questions?
I have a question on the bus account. It shows that the disbursements for the bus account, when you look at the, when you actually look at the statement for the repairs, gas and oil, so it looks like that totals up to the disbursement. Does the bus salaries not come out of that account as well? Because it's showing for the statement of expenditures for the bus with $6,691.90, and that includes part-time salaries for the drivers. But it looks like it didn't come out of the bus account. Because the only thing that's showing dispersed is $3,024.
You're looking at the revenue and expenditures?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So my, so basically, should we just take, take that total for the salaries? And shouldn't that come out of the bus account as well? Or be dispersed from the bus account?
Yeah. There's the part-time salary.
Right.
That came out of the bus account.
Okay. I'm looking at the bank account, the list where the bank accounts is. It says LaGrange City Bus at Stockyards. Over to the right there, the disbursements. The only thing that's showing came out was the gas, oil, equipment repairs.
As far as the salaries on the bus, that would be the journal entry that I do every month because the bus is set up under the general ledger for payroll.
Okay.
And at the end of each month, that's when I do the journal entries to get it out of general fund and put it into the bus fund.
Okay. So that will, that amount will come out of the bus fund for salaries?
Yes.
Okay. It's just not, okay. It's just not showing on here.
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I have one more question. So there's two line items on here for festivals. Is that for the rescheduled dancing in the streets thing? Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
And then I just wanted to ask about our unemployment insurance, our workers' comp. I know when we were working on the budget, we had to kind of play with those numbers for a little bit because we weren't sure what they were going to be. Is that the final numbers for that?
As far as the workers' comp for, like, administration, that number is it for the year.
Okay.
There won't be any more deductions.
Okay. And then I'd also like to mention, last meeting, I had brought up the compensation tax. There were some numbers that I just wasn't, just wasn't coming up with the correct numbers. I did go into City Hall, and I just wanted to make some corrections there. We did figure out, and Stephanie's here too. So we did figure out what was not showing was in the beginning, when the loan was refinanced, or when the bond was refinanced, there was a $650,000 payment that was made, and that did not show up on our paperwork. So that did come out of the account as well.
There is, there is a report we've given everybody today. It's got the yellow on the front. Attached to that is a copy of the bank account today. So I put on these, on this spreadsheet, the deposits, where it just says deposits, and the number underneath, that is the money that we have tracked, I guess in my department, that we have tracked, the money that is coming in. Underneath the checkbook, that's through the bank account. Those are the deposits that were deposited into the bank account. And then you can see all the individual things that came out of that bank account to see what the bank account total is. Now, there is a little bit of difference from the bank account statement today versus the spreadsheet because the bank has gone ahead and pulled out another bond payment and sent it in. We don't have that reflected yet. So that's what the $98,000 difference. All that money is accounted for. There is not $400,000 missing anywhere. It's, everything is in that account and is accounted for.
And maybe going forward to, thank you for putting all this together. It makes a lot more sense. Maybe going forward, I noticed there are refunds that have been issued. So anytime if there are refunds, if maybe we could just send out a note or, you know, just maybe put it in our packet just to let us know. Because, I mean, the refund number, I mean, that could make a big difference in the numbers being off. So that way, we know if it was a refund or, you know, not just a missing, you know, being misappropriated.
And so everybody's clear. What the refund is, is people that have paid into the comp tax, and at the end of the year, because they didn't work all that time in LaGrange, they file their W-2s with a form for us, and we issue a refund for what time they did not work in the city. So that's what the refund is.
And then the miscellaneous fees and things like that, those were for wire transfers.
And return checks.
So we did, right.
We did have some checks that were returned. So there's return check fees mixed in there. The expense that's listed, the $12,500, that was when they had the tree. They were removing the trees, and they were burning them. And because of the complaint from all the neighbors, it was determined to go ahead and shred those or chip them instead. So the county paid for half. We paid for half. So that's what the $12,500 was for.
There's definitely nothing spent out of this account except for home reserve debt.
Correct. And there's no, there's been no other, there's been no other withdrawals, no other deposits, nothing. I mean, this, it's all there.
And this, the account will never really balance with your quarterly report.
No. And I did not bring the comp tax quarterly report tonight because I didn't want to confuse everybody. I will email that to you guys all tomorrow. Because of how the bank statements come, and because of the dates that I use to do the quarterly report, nothing's ever going to be exact. So that's why this was as exact as we could get it, and we were still $98,000 off because the payment has already pulled. So that's as close as we could get. And we can say where that money went. So it's not like we're, it's not missing. It's not gone somewhere. We know where it is.
Will that be a journal entry or when the bank? What, this will be when the bank statement comes, the?
Yeah. When I get the August statement, I'll do a journal entry for that bond payment for August.
Right.
This is actually the bond payment. I have reflected the bond payment for August in my numbers. This bond payment was actually for September 1.
Right.
But I ran it through 8/31.
And I had talked to Stephanie earlier today. We were talking back and forth. The $650,000, that payment that was made in the beginning, when it was financed, that was not showing up anywhere on the information that we got as counsel. So what was also throwing, throwing us off is the bond was for 10.295 million. And then when you looked at where that first payment was due, where we paid the $650,000, there definitely wasn't $650,000 that came off of that. So we were going to contact Dwight, yes, and ask him if he could send us a copy or even a receipt, because we don't have a receipt of that payment. So that's what we've asked for him to send us, just so that we have proof of that $650,000 and what it went to. Because it was to Huntington Bank.
And it's reflected in here as payments. The bond payment, the initial bond payment and the monthly payments are listed here under the payments.
On the sheet that you just did?
On the sheet that I just gave.
Right. But on our debt service report, it's not, it does not show that payment on there. Right.
All righty. More questions on the comp or any questions for Stephanie? Appreciate you putting all this together, Stephanie. I know we've worked on it. Any other questions on the financials? Not all entertain a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Thank you, Steph. Thank you, Ted. All in favor? Opposed, abstention, motion carries. That takes us to the mayor's open remarks. I put about four letters in y'all's packet. Just want to mention that. This was, been some help with the park board. So we sent some letters out, mailed them out, thanking these people that helped us out, donated their time. So I just, that's the reason that is in your packet. Appreciate it. Yeah. We always like to thank anyone that volunteers. It's hard to get somebody to do that, it seemed like. So we did that. Let's see, what else I've got? I want to recognize, last month, I brought to the council about the Wooden Bucket Award that LaGrange Utilities was in the top 10 at the Kentucky Rural Waters Association last week. They were added, they were given the top highest honor, the Prestige Wooden Bucket Award. I put this on your, a copy of this when I came in. It's a, it's a great honor for LaGrange Utilities. Ted, do you want to say anything? Just, well, we just want to recognize you and LaGrange Utilities, the board, the commission, your staff, your workers. This is outstanding. So I won't sit here and read all this, but y'all can tell who all the 10 is listed that they went up against. Some pretty good-sized cities there that was in the top 10. Henderson, Marion County, Hardin County, Danville, Paintsville, McQuarrie, just Beattyville. All those were in the top 10. So LaGrange Utilities came out on top. There was quite a big checklist that actually, that they went down to. And I think it's listed in there in the letter of what they kind of checked for. So enough said about that. And thank you very much, Ted, and tell all your staff and employees. And it's quite an honor, and we appreciate that. Let's see. I've got one other thing I want to mention. This is, September is City Government Month for the schools. I don't, if, this is all in your Kentucky City Magazine. You can, the schools can go on to citymonth.org. There's a city, the city KLC sponsors this. The city government offers 15 teacher-credited, state-approved lesson plans compatible with with the required curriculum. Interactive website is, like I said, citymonth.org. There's student activity in coloring books, implementation, implement, yeah, anyway, easy for me to say. Guide, essay writing contests, and opportunity for city involvement. They do this, KLC sponsors this, every September. So. And I think that is all for me on mayor's open remarks. We'll open the floor for public comment. Anybody want to come forward for public comment? No one coming forward? All righty. Next is LaGrange Utilities report. You have that in your packet. Again, all the figures are looking great. Ted, thank you again for all you do to keep it running like this. Y'all have any, y'all have any questions for Ted? If none, we'll go to LaGrange Main Street program. Karen? Good evening, Karen.
How are you all? Okay. You've received my report, so I'll just give you some information about upcoming events. This Saturday, the merchants are going to have a warehouse, parking lot, alley sale. So come out and find, you can find it all in the little niches. Should be some really neat things from 10 to 5. That'll be this Saturday. Then Farmer's Market is this Saturday. It's continuing on even in the fall. They, their last day will be October 27th. So they'll, they'll be all the next couple of months. This Thursday, the Gallery 104 is having an opening for a show. It's called Wearable Art. You've got to stop in. It's a lot of fun, a lot of imaginative things. And then I found out I've been negligent about telling you about our folk t-shirts, "Our Friend of LaGrange, Kentucky," is what they are. And these, they were designed by Mike Prather, a local artist. And you can get those at rainy day resale and Prather Design, Prather Gallery for right now. They will be on our, on the website eventually also. Then I had just gotten the rail fan numbers. And for last month, we had 3.6 million minutes watched. That's just in one month. And 450,000 people watching. It's amazing. 450,000 people. Yeah. Different people. And I will? No. The average watch time is nine minutes, which for anybody with social media background, the average, if you get them to watch 15 seconds, that's pretty good. So we have got, this investment has, is bringing people. I've had four people in the last week just say that they were going to come through LaGrange because of it and spend the day. I haven't gotten anybody to commit to staying overnight yet, but at least they're coming in during the day. So it is definitely a worthwhile investment. Thank you very much.
I've actually had handwritten letters sent mail to City Hall to me for, you know. And one Saturday morning, I went down and met the man and his wife from Bristol, Tennessee, and his family. And they were totally amazed with LaGrange. But he found it on virtual rail fan. So it's, did they mention how many countries now or?
They did, but I didn't write that down. I kept that, I will get it back to you.
It's amazing. I mean.
Countries.
Yeah. We were up to 170 different countries watching.
Yes.
From, people from 170 different countries. And I know now we're probably, with the amount that's watching per month, we're probably over that.
Yes. Did I tell you the story about the resident from Olden County that went to see her family in England? Everybody's kind of blank, so I don't think I did. Sorry. She, they live here, but they travel home every couple of years to visit. And the first thing they said when they picked them up at the airport is, "Who do we need to contact in order to get the clock fixed? It hasn't been working." And so here she, they haven't seen her for two years, but they were going to make sure that clock got fixed. So, and I think Cory and the mayor probably get a lot of questions about that, from what I hear. So that's advertising that we, we can't buy that type of advertising. The other thing I'd like to thank, unfortunately, we had incidents with our shoplifting Saturday and today. And thankfully, I want to thank the LaGrange Police for coming so quickly once we called them. Officer Feigl was there quickly to take the report. We, but, so, thank them. They're, I know they have a lot on their plate, and that probably isn't high, but we appreciate their quick response. And I started in on talking. So did you all have any questions about my report?
No, but thank you for sending that out early enough. And, you know, it's, there's some good information there. Very thorough, and we appreciate it.
Actually, Karen, I do have a question. I noticed, reading through the reports, that we do have a couple of new appointees to the board, the Main Street Board. I just had a question was, when you appoint new ones, do you open that up to the public so that people can apply for those positions? Or do you guys just nominate with them? Because I've noticed that we have a lot of boards around town, and it's the same people, sitting on the same boards. So I was just curious, when I saw that there were new members there, is that something that you let the, you know, the public know so that if someone else is interested in serving on one of these boards?
Well, the old adage is, if you want something done, you always talk to the busy people. So that's why the same people show up. But the way that we try to do it, our members can nominate anyone to the board that they would like. What we try to do is encourage people to sit on our committees first so that you can learn what it means to be part of the Main Street Program. And those meeting, those committees, we have four, but we meet two at a time. So if people aren't, and so we meet on the third Tuesday, I'm sorry. We changed that one. The third Monday at 4:30. And that's our organization and promotions. So anybody that has a passion for those, we ask that you please. Organization is just like it sounds. It's making sure we raise funds, you know, that we keep all of our paperwork up to date and such. Promotions is, again, promoting the city and whatever we can do with that, add design. And then the other committees that meet together are economic, easy for me to say, economic vitality and also our design committee. And so the economic vitality is the one, they meet on the third Friday at 10:30. So what happens there is we discuss ways to help the businesses, business recruitment. Then on the econo, on the design committee side, it's what it looks like to be in the city. What do we want the city to look like when we have another project? What can we do with that? The design committee is also the one that approves applications for the facade grants and the new roof improvement grants that'll be coming up next year. So anybody that would like to, they can call me at 502-269-0126, and we can get them plugged in any way that they want to be involved. The more the merrier. Thank you.
I also wanted to mention, because the Green Space Committee is working not only with council but with Main Street Program. We are on Wednesday, September 19th, going to do an early morning trip to Mount Washington to meet with their city planner and to look at their new multi-use park that they have been working on for the last couple of years. It's going to be a quick in, quick out. We're going to leave at 8:00 a.m. from LaGrange, get there, meet with them, discuss some of their financing, some of their pros and cons of things that they've done, just to learn. And then the plan is to be back to LaGrange by noon. So if anybody wants to piggyback and come along with us, you're more than welcome. Again, it's Wednesday, September 19th, leaving LaGrange at 8:00 a.m. So just let me know or Karen know that you want to go along. Thanks.
And that way, we can make sure and get you the address because they're, we're still trying to decide where we're going to meet. If we meet at City Hall or? Let's see. Oh, another thing. Ghost tours will start next in October. Another way for people to be involved, if anybody would like to be a tour guide, that is a volunteer position. But they go Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights. And so if anybody's theatrical, you'd love to speak in front of people. Just let me know. I like to dress up.
Do you have somebody that might be? Should I have them contact you directly? Okay.
And also watch the, our Facebook page. I am going to be putting out a description, so people will be able to get through there. Anything else?
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
We'll have the second reading of public hearing. Ordinance 10, 2018. Steve, if you would, please.
Thank you. Ordinance number 10, 2018, ordinance levying a general tax for the city of LaGrange, Kentucky. Whereas it is necessary for the municipal corporation of the city of LaGrange to obtain funds for the operation and maintenance of the city government and to maintain the police protection of the residents of said city and further to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Whereas the Commonwealth of Kentucky, through its statutes and constitution, particularly KRS 92.280, KRS 92.281, and all other applicable law, does hereby authorize and empower a city of the home rule class to levy a tax for general purposes. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of LaGrange, Kentucky as follows. One, there is hereby levied an ad valorem tax at the rate of 20 cents per $100 worth of real property in the estate of all persons, firms, corporations, or associations having their offices or places of business or executing any right, license, or franchise within the city of LaGrange. There is further hereby levied an ad valorem tax at the rate of 26.5 cents per $100 worth of all personal property in the estate of all persons, firms, corporations, or associations having their offices or places of business or executing any right, license, or franchise within the city of LaGrange. This tax is levied for all purposes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018. This tax is levied for all purposes for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019. Two, the tax levied by this ordinance is assessed as of January 1, 2018 pursuant to the provisions of KRS 92.4203 and KRS 92.280, and all of said taxes are hereby declared to be due, payable, and collectible as of September 15, 2018. Three, any taxpayer residing in the city may pay tax bill at any time after their receipt, and any amount paid before October 15, 2018 shall receive a discount of 2% of the gross amount of the bill. For any bill af, paid after October 15, 2018 shall be paid in its face amount as shown thereon. Any bill remaining unpaid after November 15 shall be deemed delinquent, and said tax shall have a penalty and the sum of 10% of its face amount added. If any bill is unpaid after January 1 of the year, following the year that tax bill was originally due, there will, in addition to the penalty, be 1% interest per month due on the unpaid bill until paid. Penalties and interest are cumulative. And if suit is initiated, then the taxpayer shall be charged to be required to pay court costs and attorney and/or paralegal fees. Five, any tax bills remaining in the hand of the treasurer or the city clerk on December 15, 2018. Or for any prior year thereto which have not been paid, shall be endorsed by the clerk or treasurer as delinquent, at which time the clerk or treasurer shall proceed to compute the penalty described in the ordinance and add the same to the unpaid tax bill. After one letter of notice of delinquency has been sent to the taxpayer by the clerk or treasurer and taxes remain delinquent for a period of 30 days thereafter, the city clerk or treasurer shall then deliver the unpaid tax bills to the city attorney for collection. The city attorney shall receive a fee of $140 per hour for the time spent collecting delinquent taxes, and this fee shall be charged as a cost against the delinquent taxpayer. Six, the city shall have the right to place a lien on, as described by statute, on property and recorded in the Oldham County Court Clerk's office, which recording fees shall be addressed, shall be added to the tax bill and shall be paid prior to any lien being released. Failure to file a notice of lien in the office of the Oldham County Court Clerk does not invalidate the statutory lien granted by the Kentucky Revised Statutes and is not a waiver of the right to enforce it. Seven, taxes levied by this ordinance shall be construed as a general purpose tax for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2018, and ending June 30, 2019. Eight, the ordinance is adopted and passed pursuant to provisions of KRS 92.280 and all other applicable law, and shall be in full force and effect from and after the date of its passage approval and publication required by law. Nine, if any court of competent jurisdiction shall deem any part of this ordinance invalid, said judgment shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance. It is the expressed intention of the city council that this ordinance and all provisions hereof shall be considered severable, and the invalidity of any section, clause, provision, or any other part of, portions of the ordinance shall not invalidate the other portions of this ordinance. This ordinance shall take effect and be enforced from and after its date of passage approval and publication as required by law.
Thank you, Steve. I'd like to entertain a motion on the Ordinance 10, 2018.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance number 10, 2018.
Thank you.
Take it.
Thank you, Trey. Need a motion going to public hearing?
Motion for public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone in the public want to come forward, make any comment on this ordinance? Motion go out of public hearing?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Got a motion, second, need, is there a discussion by the council?
Mayor, I just wanted to confirm that these are the same numbers from last year, just so that everybody here knows that there's no increase as to either of these tax numbers. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
No, no change at all from the previous year. Everything's the same. Another discussion? Stephanie, you want to do a roll call, please?
Jason?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tad?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Motion carries. Thank you all. Next, Steve, we got the second reading in public hearing, Ordinance 11, 2018. You would, please?
Thank you. Commonwealth of Kentucky, City of LaGrange, Ordinance 11-2018. An ordinance relating to the prohibition of smoking in City of LaGrange. Whereas City of LaGrange has the authority to the provisions of KRS Chapters 67, 100, and other applicable law to enact ordinances, and whereas City of LaGrange's first obligation is to protect the lives of all people in the City of LaGrange, and whereas the purpose of enacting a smoking ordinance is to protect the public health and welfare by prohibiting smoking in public places and places of employment, and to recognize and guarantee that the public's need to breathe smoke-free air shall have a priority over the individual's desire to smoke. And whereas secondhand smoke is a Group A carcinogen, such as asbestos, radon, gas, and benzene, and has been proven to cause cancer, no level of secondhand smoke is safe. And whereas numerous studies have found that tobacco smoke is a major contributor to indoor air pollution, breathing secondhand smoke is a cause of disease in healthy non-smokers. These diseases include heart disease, stroke, respiratory disease, and lung cancer. Children exposed to secondhand smoke have an increased risk of respiratory infections, sudden infant death syndrome, developmental abnormalities, and cancer. And whereas a significant amount of secondhand smoke exposure occurs in the workplace and employees who work in smoke-filled businesses suffer a 25% to 50% higher risk of heart attack and higher rates of death from cardiovascular disease and cancer, as well as increased acute respiratory disease and measurable decrease in lung function. And whereas the U.S. Surgeon General has determined that the simple separation of smokers and non-smokers within the same airspace may reduce but does not eliminate the exposure of non-smokers to secondhand smoke. And whereas the Environmental Protection Agency and the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers has determined that secondhand smoke cannot be reduced to safe levels in businesses by high rates of ventilation, air cleaners, which are only capable of filtering the particulate matter and odors in smoke, do not eliminate the known toxins in secondhand smoke. And whereas the Environmental Protection Agency and the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the National Cancer Institute, and the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention agree that secondhand smoke is harmful to health, and whereas high-tech smoking devices, commonly referred to as electronic cigarettes or e-cigarettes, that closely resemble and purposefully mimic the act of smoking, by having users inhale vaporized liquid nicotine created by heat through an electronic ignition system, have been proven to contain numerous risks to human health. After testing for a number of electronic cigarettes from two leading manufacturers, the Food and Drug Administration, FDA, determined that various samples tested contained not only nicotine but also detectable levels of known carcinogens and toxic chemicals, including tobacco-specific nitrous samenes and diethylene glycol, a toxic chemical used in antifreeze. The FDA's testing also suggested that quality control processes used to manufacture these products are inconsistent or nonexistent. According to a more recent study, electronic cigarette emissions are made up of a high concentration of ultrifying particles, and the particle concentration is higher than in conventional tobacco cigarette smoke. Electronic cigarettes produce an aerosol or vapor of undetermined potentially harmful substances, which may appear similar to the smoke emitted by traditional tobacco products. Their use in workplaces and public places where smoking of traditional tobacco products is prohibited creates concern and confusion and leads to difficulties in enforcing the smoking prohibitions. And whereas smoking is a form of air pollution and constitute both a danger to health and a material public nuisance. One, definitions. For the purpose of this ordinance, the following definitions shall apply. A, dwelling, a house, apartment, or other place of residence used primarily for conducting activities of daily living, including, without limitation, private residences, a hospital, hospice, or nursing home room. A private residence is a place of employment if it is used as a childcare, adult daycare, or other healthcare facility. B, electronic smoking device, any device containing or delivering nicotine or any other substance that can be used in any manner for the purpose of inhaling the vapor smoke or aerosol from the device. This, the term includes any such device, i.e., whether manufactured, distributed, marketed, or sold as an e-cigarette, e-cigar, e-pipe, e-huka, or vape pen, or any other name or product descriptor. C, enclosed area, all space in a structure enclosed from the weather, being permanently or temporarily enclosed by walls and roof with doors. D, place of employment, any location, either public or private, where an owner, employer, or employee perform their designated duties. This includes but is not limited to employee lounges, restrooms, conference rooms, meeting rooms, classrooms, employee cafeterias, and hallways. A dwelling is not a place of employment unless it is used as a childcare, adult daycare, or healthcare facility. E, smoking, the use of any device used to ignite or heat tobacco or any other substance, whether natural or synthetic, for the purpose of, i.e., inhalation, exhalation, burning, or carrying any lighted or heated cigar, cigarette, pipe, hookahs, or any other lighted or heated product intended for inhalation, in any manner or form. Smoking also includes the use of an electronic smoking device, which creates an aerosol, smoke, or vapor, in any form, manner or form, or the use of any oral smoking device for the purpose of circumventing the prohibition of smoking in this article. Two, prohibition of smoking indoors. A, except as otherwise noted in Section B, smoking is prohibited in places of employment and in enclosed areas. B, smoking is prohibited within a reasonable distance of the outside entrance to, open window of, air intake of, a ventilation system in any enclosed area in which smoking is prohibited by this ordinance. C, smoking is prohibited in any enclosed areas or vehicles owned, leased, rented, operated, or controlled by the City of LaGrange. D, nothing in this subchapter shall authorize smoking in any location where it is otherwise prohibited by statute, ordinance, and regulation, or by order of the Fire Marshal. C, where smoking is not regulated. A, notwithstanding any other provision in this ordinance, to the contrary, the following area shall be exempt from the provisions of Section 2 above. I, a person's private dwelling, unless used as a childcare, adult daycare, or healthcare facility. Four, non-retaliation and non-waiver of rights. A, no employer shall refuse to hire an applicant for employment, retaliate against or discharge any employee because they exercise their rights afforded by this ordinance to report in an attempt to prosecute a violation of this ordinance. B, an employee who continues to work in a setting where an employer allows smoking a violation of this ordinance does not waive or otherwise surrender any legal rights the employee may have against the employer or any other party. Five, penalties. A, an individual found guilty of violating this ordinance is punishable by a fine of not less than $50. B, an individual who owns, manages, operates, or otherwise controls a public place or place of employment and found guilty of violating this ordinance is punishable by a fine, I, of not less than $50 for the first offense, II, for the, of not less than $100 for the second offense, III, of a fine of not less than $250 for the third and each subsequent offense. C, an individual who violates this ordinance by refusing to extinguish their smoking material when requested, shall be requested to leave the establishment, and if refused, may also be subject to prosecution for trespass. D, in addition to the fines established by 4B, violation of this ordinance by an individual who owns, manages, operates, or otherwise controls a public place or place of employment shall result in the suspension and/or revocation of any or all permits or licenses issued for the premises on which the violation occurred. E, violation of this ordinance is declared to be a public nuisance, which may be abated by the city or its designated agents by restraining order, preliminary and permanent injunction, or other means provided for by law. The city may recover the reasonable costs of any court enforcement action seeking abatement of this nuisance. F, each day on which a violation of this ordinance occurs shall be considered a separate and distinct violation. Six, posting signs. No smoking signs or other international no smoking symbol consisting of a pictorial representation of a burning cigarette enclosed in a red circle with a red bar across it shall be clearly and conspicuously posted at every entrance, exit, of an enclosed public area. Seven, severability. If any provision, clause, sentence, or paragraph of this ordinance or the application thereof to any person or circumstances shall be held invalid, that invalidity shall not affect the other provisions of this ordinance, which may be given effect independent of the invalid provision or application, and to this end, the provisions of this ordinance are declared to be severable. This ordinance shall become effective and be enforced from and after its date of passage approval and publication as required by law. First reading, August 6, 2018. Second reading, September 4, 2018.
Thank you, Steve. This is the same ordinance that the county has. We're just adopting the county ordinance. That's what I'm told.
Mayor said that we're adopting this ordinance, which is patterned after the county ordinance. I would like to say on the record that I did not have any participation in the drafting of this ordinance, so this is not an ordinance drafted by your city attorney. I'm not sure who drafted it.
Well, it's, it's copied after the county, so we, we have a motion on Ordinance 11, 2018.
I'll make a motion on Ordinance 11, 2018.
Thank you. Ann? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion going to public hearing.
Take it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to come forward on the ordinance?
Good evening. My name is Keith Hadley. I've been talking with the county about this ordinance. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight and the public comment. May I put this over here? There's been a lot of speculation, a lot of things going around in the media and in the Oldham era, especially in a lot of people saying that, that the KSFA was asking for an exemption for vapor products. That was not the case. I've never asked for an exemption for vapor products in the smoking ordinance. As a matter of fact, I commended Oldham County and I commend you all for accepting this ordinance to protect people based on perception alone. I was kind of surprised to see that 60, 70% of that ordinance is talking about smoking and all of the effects that we know smoking causes, which is, everybody can agree on that. As far as this exemption, what I'm asking for is, is at a vapor store only. The reason for this is because we're the ones helping people to quit smoking. Vapor products and e-liquid, it says that the, the manufacturing of e-liquid is not streamlined. Well, it is. I myself am registered with the FDA. I have an FEI number. I have to update all my ingredient listings, my submissions, and everything else. The only thing that's in e-liquid is propylene glycol, vegetable glycerin, food, food-grade flavoring, and nicotine. Yes, nicotine is derived from tobacco, but it's also derived from a lot of other plants that are just naturally grown substance. With this, with this ordinance in place in LaGrange, it will stifle my ability to help people quit smoking. We've helped thousands of people quit smoking here in the city. And I think that since you have to be over 18 to enter into my store, and people go there specifically to quit smoking, I would think that that would be a commended thing, helping people quit smoking in the city, not something that is stifled in trying to stamp to quit smoking in the city, not something that is stifled in trying to stamp us out. The FDA came out with that reading in two thousand and sixteen. I actually have some documents here on the newest readings and studies of indoor vapor, vapor production, and the secondhand contaminants or toxins that you might find, and they're saying that it is as close to breathing air as possible. It disperses quickly. If you take a can of Lysol aerosol spray and you spray in your house for disinfectant spray, the immediate thing is compression, and it drops to the floor because of the heavy particulate matter. The other thing in that ordinance that it's stating is that the PM of vapor is much higher than tobacco smoke. Well, that's not true. The FDA and the Health Board actually said that it had to be under zero point zero five UPM, and it is well below that. That is the reason why you can do breathing treatments with VG and mental, this to be able to clear out your lungs when you're at the hospital if you have pneumonia. That is the reason why inhalers work for asthmatic patients, because they made that guideline in that ruling. Our products, they adhere to that ruling, so it is no more damaging to your lungs than breathing air or doing something in a hospital. I just want to state publicly that I disagree with not having an exemption, and that I do agree with having an ordinance in place for places like Walmart, and Applebee's, and everywhere else that your family may be. I have three kids myself, I wouldn't want to be in a restaurant and not be a smoker or a vapor, and have somebody do that around my kids. The fact that this ordinance is going through with proven results without having the proof is quite disturbing to me. When I have proof and evidence and science-based facts talking about my industry, and there is nothing on this end for this ordinance in the county and adopted by LaGrange now, I'd like an opportunity to answer any questions you all might have on this ordinance, and I'd also like to give you a packet of some of the information that I'm going to be submitting to the county as well, as long as it goes to you. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Is your shop the one that's up?
Yes.
Close to, well, it's probably the only one in LaGrange. It's next to, close to the pizza place, right?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the neighbors, have your neighbors ever complained? Complained about the smoke?
The neighbor has complained, but he's never had anything, he's never been able to speak with me or willing to speak with me to rectify the situation. I've talked with Mr. Powell, put up vapor barrier seals on the wall just to make sure because it's an old pre-code ordinance of a building. There's never been any communication where we say, hey, this is what's going on, hey, let me fix that, hey, thanks for fixing that. So there really is no proof of anything going over there, and in which case, there really isn't that much in there. The only time people are usually vaping is when they're testing the flavors, which helps them get off smoking.
So, to have a vape shop, like I know in a restaurant, in a kitchen, you have to have hoods to, you know, an exhaust hood to bring the smoke out. Are you required in vape shops to have anything like that?
You're not required to do that, and the ASHRAE standards stated in the ordinance has nothing to do with vapor products. It's all about smoking products, which is well documented. I have offered to put in an exhaust fan, I've talked with the owners, the landowners about that. When you vape, it dissipates within three to five seconds. It doesn't sit there and just stay there like cigarette combustible tobacco does. Now, obviously, I'm aware of my neighbor's concerns, and I'm aware of his involvement in the community, but I also believe that owning a business and having a business in LaGrange should have the same inalienable rights as any other business would. This is not going to affect my neighbor, it's going to affect my store. And recently, we've had complaints about people following the ordinance and being outside to try the samples and to vape outside, because we've been telling people they can't do that inside, until this was all worked out, hopefully.
Well, as a business owner myself, I have many, many of my employees that vape, and I am continuously on them because it's become such a big habit, I find, with a lot of the younger generation, that they just pull it out no matter where they are or what they're doing, you know, so.
And I can understand that, and I've always told people, especially in the KSFA, or when I lecture, when I go to DC and I talk with them, I say, you know, have to treat it like smoking. But at the same time, it's not smoking, it's not combustible tobacco. And it is a healthier option, so I'm glad your employees are vaping instead of smoking, to be honest.
Well, I always hear them talking about, oh, what level of nicotine is that? And I know that there's some of them that you can actually get with, I don't know anything about it, but I guess higher nicotine than even cigarettes, or?
Cigarettes at one point two milligrams per cigarette. You cross that across twenty, that's a lot of milligrams of nicotine in a pack of cigarettes. The bottled juice that we made that will sell to them is, if it's a six-milligram, it's zero point six percent across the thirty-mill bottle or sixty-mill bottle. So it's the same thing like a beer, if it's six percent, and it's not each sip, it's the whole bottle, which is primarily why you see people, if they just now quit smoking, they're vaping more because they're used to getting that really high dose of nicotine from each cigarette, and it really doesn't provide that to them. Now, there is liquids that you can buy that have higher amounts of nicotine, but nicotine isn't the question here, it's the toxicity, and nicotine itself does not cause cancer, and it's not toxic. Thank you.
Thirty years after I quit smoking.
I wish this was around when you were.
I could see me right now someone coming up and telling me I could not smoke. It wouldn't have been pleasant. And it is bad, it is so bad. My children used to ask me, please stop, please stop, please stop, and I didn't. But I finally did, and this, what did you call it, this?
Vapor.
Vapor?
Yeah.
Vaping?
It just looks the same, but based on perception, it's really not.
Yeah, I have, I didn't know what it was called, but I have a neighbor that does it, and it is a whole lot like smoking, I think. He sits in his garage and does it.
The difference between smoking and vaping is about five thousand chemicals that are in cigarettes. The combustion of a cigarette causes the tar. The old saying, you smoke for nicotine, you die from the tar. This technology is what's in the future. This is why tobacco companies are saying they're not going to make cigarettes anymore because they're buying their way into this technology, because truthfully, this is a way to get your nicotine and lower it. You can't go to the store, as you well know, and say, I'd like a lower pack of Marlboros with less nicotine in them.
No, I don't know that. I don't know anything about cigarettes anymore, thank goodness.
But if that was an option, then that would be a great thing.
What I do know, I mean, this is kind of getting off of it, I think, but I have relatives and I have friends that are still smoking, and this coming up, I can see them right now being told, no, you cannot smoke in here, or you cannot smoke in your yard, or you can't smoke in your whatever, and they're going to go off the end, I mean, off the, and I would have, I would have, thirty years ago, if you'd told me I couldn't smoke, I would have been really bad, really bad. And my husband died of lung cancer, so good luck with this.
Well, this is what the industry's about, is to try to help people quit smoking and eventually get off of nicotine.
I think you should be able to, you know, do what you want to do with your own business. My concern would be the neighbors, if you have neighbors and it's seeping over into their business. I know people will go into vape shops specifically to try that, and to try the different oils or?
They try the different flavors, yeah, to find something that they like.
So, I mean?
Which there's no nicotine in our testers either.
Right, and that's your business, that's how you make your living, and I'm, you know, I'm all about that, I'm not up for, you know, causing someone to, you know, completely lose their business, but as long as the neighbors, you know, that would be my concern, because if they're not vapors or smokers, and it's something that they have to, you know, sit in and?
There are smokers that work next door, my neighbors, yeah. There is, and?
Smokers out there. There's a lot of smokers still out there, lots.
Oh, yeah, but I mean, specifically next door to me, there's somebody who smokes, two people that smoke next door.
I have several.
There is no way that anything is getting over there, and based on hearsay from what my neighbor said, and facts that I'm saying and showing you, I feel like hearsay doesn't really cut it. If he was willing to speak with me two years ago and work this out, which we've been trying to, it would have been fine, but he just didn't want to hear anything. And we've done everything we can to make it so nothing does go over there, and I haven't had a complaint in like six, seven months about it. So it's not that it's going next door, you know.
I had one comment, if I could. I wanted to point out that vaping is not exclusive to people who are attempting to quit smoking. I mean, there's a significant number of middle school, high school students who are vaping who have never in their life smoked, and who are attracted to the different flavors, the fruit flavors and things of that nature. And I will say that we could spend all evening and all day tomorrow going over the numerous articles about the dangers of vaping, I'm not going to get into that, but to say that vaping's not a dangerous situation, I think, is inaccurate based on the studies out there. We can agree to disagree on that, but also just wanted to point out the issue with the children who are vaping regularly in this city, in these schools, and they are attracted to that. Maybe they think it's safer than smoking, maybe it is, but it's not just people who are trying to quit smoking, I just want to point that out.
I agree. I don't want our middle school, high school kids vaping or smoking. I mean, I didn't want to smoke when I was thirteen years old, but I could buy them at a gas station, and it was pretty easy. What I can say is they've done numerous studies and numerous quick, you know, secret shopper things all over Oldham County. We're not the ones selling it to them. We're not the ones selling them the products. They can buy them on eBay, they can buy them online, they can buy them anywhere, they can have their older brother buy them for them. Kids are going to try what they're going to try. And studies-wise, this year, they showed actual smoking rates declining and e-cigarette use declining in youth. So if this is really an issue, why are those declining? And that's from CDC themselves.
Are you required to age-validate at your store?
Excuse me?
Are you required to age-validate the purchaser of your?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, well, the whole state of Kentucky is any KSFA member, but we implemented that before two thousand and fourteen, when, I forget which mayor was in Louisville, but he passed that as well, and that was when I only had a store in Louisville. But, yeah, you have to be over eighteen to be in my store, or you have to be with your parent, not an adult. So if an adult comes in and they bring their child, or a teenager, then that teenager can sit on the couch, but that's got to be their parent. Other than that, I can't kick them out with their kid if they're trying to get their liquid real quick and leaving, I'm not going to do that. But as far as anybody that comes in the store, you're ID'd upon entry or before purchase. So if they even have a question, they ID you. If they don't know you, they ID you. If you look under forty-five, they'll ID you. And anybody that's not IDing people, or anybody in my organization, they're going to be fired because that's my main thing. I have three kids, I don't want them to vape, I don't want them to smoke. You know, that's mandatory. So this exemption, what I've been asking for the county, is not misrepresented as being vaping indoors and vaping everywhere. The recent survey even said this exemption will allow vaping indoors, and that is not what I've been asking at all. I've been asking for just the retail stores or a business that procures seventy-five percent or more of their income from ends units or vapor products. Louisville passed the same thing because they didn't want to hurt businesses. Lexington did the same thing. So by able to keep these stores operating in the city, you're able to stop kids from getting these products by having to go into a vape shop. Now, if they go to a gas station, I can't stop that. But, you know, I'm supporting Senator Alvarero's bill to ban vaping on public school grounds, any school, doesn't matter if you're in college, he's promoting for that. And I've had several meetings with him saying, we need to do this, like, you're not even allowed to vape in your car to go pick up your kid on school property, because we don't want them to see it, to think it might be cool, but you can't control what adults are going to do or what they want to do. Just like I can't have an opioid addict quit opioids unless they want to do it. I can provide them a treatment center, but I can't force them to do anything that they don't want to do.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I would just like to reiterate that the ordinance that's in front of you is exactly what the county has in place right now, word for word. For the record, there are, that I know of, two people that have filed for exemptions with the county for this ordinance. The reason we did not ask the city attorney to draft this ordinance for us was because he is one of the people that has applied for the exemption for the ordinance. I have received numerous complaints for the adjoining business that is up against the vape shop. The first one that I know of was back in February when I first started, and at that time, there was no county ordinance, there was nothing we could do. The owner has called several times, especially in the mornings when they come in and work, and they open up the doors, they said the smell in there is very, very strong, and they have to open it up to air it out. I can't quote you any statistics, facts, anything like that, just based on what goes on in there. I have been in there several times for unrelated issues, and I have asked, do you have incense burning, what is that smell? And they said, no, it's the shop next door. So there is some carryover for the smell, it is carrying over next door. When the county ordinance went into effect, they called in a complaint, I responded to the shop, gave them my card, said, hey, you can't do this in a shop, you're very well aware of what the ordinance is. Since that time, they have now set up some sort of partition, so when you drive by, you can't see into the shop to see if anybody's vaping. So short of sitting in there the whole time they're open to catch somebody doing it, you know, we just have to rely on the fact that hopefully they'll hold themselves accountable and not do that. But again, it's the same ordinance that the county has in place, nothing different, we're just enacting it as our own.
And so just for clarification, this is currently in effect within the city limits of LaGrange?
Yes, it is.
We're just putting it in effect for ourselves in case the county changes something.
In case the county, if the county changes things, they can change whatever they want, but this way, we have control over what happens in our city.
And we should have.
And I'm aware too of the, at least one owner's, one complaint from this person. Has there been any discussion about an exemption from the standpoint of a completely freestanding building with its own ventilation and some type of minimum requirement from other businesses?
That's, I mean, as far as I know, I don't know what they have proposed, where it stands right now, it's not working.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Mayor, if I may come off the clock for a few minutes, I'd like to give some comments to counsel tonight as a citizen.
That's right. Good evening. We said it tonight when we started, liberty and justice for all. The problem is, sometimes we say it and we don't understand it, and that's okay. There's been a misstatement made tonight. I did not, and have not, ask the county for an exemption to their ordinance on smoking. What I have asked them to do is to restore an exemption under their prior ordinance. Not asking for something new, I'm asking for something that was common sense and clear to be included in their law, to be restored. And that exemption was a tobacconist's exemption. If you sold tobacco, and you had a store for tobacco sales, you could smoke in the store. Did you know that that was an exemption that existed in your county within the last calendar year? Did you know that? A lot of you probably didn't. The other thing is that in Kentucky, to date, the legislature has chosen not to get involved in this, because they've left it to the sound discretion of counties and cities to decide if they're going to have a favorable business environment to tobacconists or not. And tonight, you're faced with that choice, because if you adopt this particular ordinance, there is no exemption that existed previously included in your document. Now, I have been before the Public Safety Committee meeting, I've been before the Economic Development Committee meeting, and here's how it went with the county. Steve, we hear you, this is Economic Development, we hear you, but you need to go to Public Safety, this is a public safety concern. Well, I'm sure it is, but it's a business concern. concern. Well, I'm sure it is, but it's a business concern. And I'm serious about that. It's a business concern. When I went to Public Safety, they said, well, we hear you, Steve. We understand that other states have decided that on a state level, there needs to be some common sense brought to this. Michigan and Indiana in particular have state laws that say municipalities and counties cannot prohibit cigar bars. They have guidelines for what qualifies as a cigar bar, but a cigar bar can be a cigar bar. And you can go in there and you can smoke like a grown woman or a grown man. And you can enjoy yourself and have pleasure, and you can decide whether or not you want to do that. And if you work there, you decide whether or not that's where you want to work. Liberty, remember that? Liberty and justice for all. Liberty for the customer, liberty for the business owner, liberty for everyone involved in the transaction. But the county has decided now they don't want that exception, and I have to be put on hold some more. The city is now saying, well, we're going to pass the law too, just like theirs, without that exemption. Well, let me ask you this. What happens if I succeed at the county level? What if they say, it's okay. You can have, if you're a tobacconist, you can smoke in your store and your customers can smoke there too, enclosed. So you don't have to be ashamed and go outside only in good weather. And in the wintertime, you guys have to close the club because it's, it's just too cold outside to smoke. And it's a shame that we have to put you out there, but that's your choice. Either smoke in the cold or you can't have your club and your fun. Well, I guess I'll have to come back here again as a citizen, not as an attorney on behalf of the city, and speak again about why this is a good idea for LaGrange. I can tell you truthfully that I've looked at several sites in LaGrange to do what I'm suggesting. And I've had several people very interested in renting me space to do just what I've suggested. But I've had to put that on hold because I don't know what's going on, first of all, with the county. And second, now I don't know what's going on with the city. So instead, I'm taking some of my money now and I'm investing it somewhere else. But I still have money and I'd still like to invest it. And, oh, where's, there's my friend, Keith. You know what? Keith makes money off of this. Did you know that? Did you know he makes some money off the business he's in? I make money off the business I'm in too. And I'm not ashamed of that. That shouldn't be something to shut us down. No, it should make us stand up. We have liberty and justice. We should stand in front of you and say, no, make a reasonable exemption. Don't let common sense leave the building when you do this. This is a one size fits all that doesn't fit the situation. It's not fair. Think about it before you vote. Think about what if this was you standing on this side of the podium tonight? I want you to at least consider it. Everybody should have an opportunity to hear from both sides. This is just one more thing to consider. I offer this to you not as counsel, but as a citizen and someone who has a business in LaGrange and would like to do more business in LaGrange. Thank you, and I'll return to my role.
Good evening. I am Liz Burrows. I live at 2005 Cricket Court in Crestwood, and I work at the Oldham County Health Department. I am the Tobacco Control Prevention Coordinator, and anything else they ask me to do, I do. So I thank you for having a little time to talk tonight. I want to thank you for considering a comprehensive ordinance for the city of LaGrange. The ordinance that you're considering as written protects all workers, present and future. It creates a level playing field among all businesses that sell electronic cigarette products and others, and it simplifies enforcement. It ensures that as our community changes and new businesses come and some businesses go and they move, that all workers are protected. It helps us support that Oldham County is the healthiest county in the state of Kentucky. I want to reiterate, and I know we talked earlier, there's really no question about whether the aerosol emitted from an electronic cigarette is dangerous. It is. It contains particulate matter that is dangerous. It contains metal and silica particles. It's not just the nicotine, and it's not water vapor. And when we call it vaping and vapor, we are sending a message to kids that it's just water vapor. So in public health, we call it aerosol because that's what it is. You don't put water in the e-cig and heat it and get water vapor. You get aerosol. So it does have particulate matter in it that's dangerous. And that's really not contested. When you allow exemptions, you place workers at risk, not only the people who work there, but people who come in for maintenance, for inspections. You know, we have health department staff that do inspections, and you're putting those people at risk when you have exemptions for certain businesses. Delivery people, it's not just the people that work at that business. Also, the adjacent businesses, which we talked about a little bit. We know what the business layout of LaGrange looks like right now. We don't know what's going to come in the future. We don't know that a vape shop or a cigar bar won't end up being right next to a learning center or a family restaurant. We don't know that. Comprehensive ordinances put in place protections that will last through the future and changes in business. We talked about ventilation. Does it remove the risks? We learned that the initial county ordinance that was passed in 2006 and amended in 2007, it did allow for exemptions for smoking break rooms. They were supposed to be separately ventilated. The health department was the enforcing agency, and there was a lot of, it, it didn't work. We had some complaints at a certain business. When you would go in, they had a, they had a vape, that, they had a smoking break room that had the ventilation that was required. But when you would open a door to get a certain product out, that the smoke would come at you. And we had lots of complaints about that because the smoke wasn't staying where it was supposed to. It wasn't being ventilated as it was supposed to. Because we know, based on the American Society for Heating or Refrigeration and Air Conditioning Engineers, you can't ventilate it out. You cannot eliminate the risks. We also know that only, when you look at comprehensive ordinances across the nation, you look at ordinances either partial or comprehensive, only comprehensive ordinances have shown outcomes in reducing COPD and heart attack emergency room admissions. Those cities and those counties that have comprehensive ordinances have seen reductions in ER admissions for COPD and heart attacks. Those counties and cities with partial ordinances have not necessarily seen those significant reductions. So the goal of the health department, and I know the goal of the council, is to protect everyone. So I want to thank you all again for considering the comprehensive ordinance. It's the best protector of public health. You join over 683 if a comprehensive ordinance passes. You join over 683 other communities across the nation. There are at least 10 in Kentucky that have comprehensive ordinances that do not include exemptions. So we're not alone. We're not alone in having an ordinance that is fully comprehensive. They are easier to enforce. They level the playing field. And they don't, when, when Louisville initially passed their comprehensive, their smoke-free ordinance in 2004, 2005, they exempted Churchill Downs as a specific business. And they were then sued by a group of other businesses who didn't feel like that exemption was fair. And the Circuit Court in Kentucky upheld that it was not an appropriate exemption for one specific business. So adding exemptions open up, opens up loopholes for things that maybe you didn't intend. And it also creates an atmosphere for kind of unfair advantages among businesses that sell similar products. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
You brought up the case about Churchill Downs. And Churchill Downs was specifically named in the statute. And that was determined to be special legislation because they named a particular business and gave particular favor to a particular business. The tobacconist's exception that previously existed in the county ordinance was never challenged during its entire existence. Is that correct?
As far as I am aware.
And in fact, by naming tobacconists as exemptions, there were no particular businesses identified, correct? Yes or no? It's not like Churchill Downs, is it? They didn't identify any particular store that was exempted, did they?
That is very true.
They identified.
But right now, we're looking at two very specific businesses that are requesting exemptions.
Mr. Emery, are you speaking as city attorney or as a citizen now? Because I think you've got a conflict of interest going on right now.
I'm asking a question from the bench.
I think you've got a conflict of, you've got a conflict of interest right now.
And I need to know the basis for that. I'm asking as your city attorney so that I will understand what this is about.
No, it sounds like you've got a conflict of interest.
Because there's things being said, sir. Sir, it's not a conflict of interest. I'm trying to represent the city right now. That's absolutely my interest.
You know, let me, let me stop right here a minute. You know, y'all talking exemptions, y'all talking all this. All this was as a public hearing about this one ordinance that we got. We have not even voted on this order yet. And I don't understand why we're hearing exemptions and everything on this ordinance. So I'm going to close this public hearing right now, and I'm going to take it back to the council. So I will ask the council if y'all have any discussion on this ordinance. Well, yes, I'm sorry. We need to go out of public hearing. Thank you, Jean. All in favor? Opposed? All right, we're out of public hearing. Now then, we've got a motion of second on this ordinance. This has nothing to do with an exemption. You know, this, this conversation started. So if y'all want to have a discussion on the ordinance, we'll, with the council, we can do that. If there's any questions on it and discussion, if there's not, then I'll call for a roll call.
I'd just like to say, and I'm going to kind of reiterate what Jason said. I know through my work and through my personal experience with two middle schoolers and a high schooler, vaping, specifically juuling, is increasing all of the time among kids. There is a perception that it's safe. It's highly addictive. One jewel stick has as much nicotine as an entire pack of cigarettes. These kids are able to sneak it within the classroom, and I realize that's a whole different issue, but it is a problem. I think it's feeding an addiction that then, once they become 18 and then can walk into a store to purchase. And I also know from a business standpoint, the, the effects of having something next door to you, even, you know, I'm, I'm a non-smoker, and I can tell if someone has been in my house that smoked a cigarette five hours ago. I can smell it. It's something that I'm very sensitive to. And so, you know, as, as somebody who would, had a, would have a business next to a vape shop, you know, I, I can guarantee that I could, I can smell the different odors and aromas that come through. I don't even like air freshener. So I, I really would have a problem with that.
I don't like smoking anymore myself, but again, I'll have to say I smoked for 20 or 30 years. It was 30 years ago. But I don't feel like I have the right to tell other people to smoke or not smoke.
We're not telling them that. We're just saying they can't smoke in that store.
Well, that's what I mean.
Because it affects their neighbors.
Any other discussion?
Or in a lot of other places.
Stephanie, will you do a roll call, please?
Jason?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
No.
Ann?
Yes.
Tad?
Abstained.
Five yes, one no, one abstention.
Motion, Gary. Thank you. Next, we have a second reading, public hearing of ordinance 12, 2018.
Thank you. City of LaGrange, ordinance number 12, series 2018, an ordinance adopting the existing Oldham County MS4 program stormwater ordinances. Whereas the city of LaGrange has the authority pursuant to the provisions of Kentucky revised statutes and other applicable Kentucky law to adopt, prove, and incorporate by reference Oldham County's MS4 stormwater ordinances. And whereas it is in the city's best interest to adopt these ordinances for the protection of the public, as these terms provide for safe practices and best practices concerning construction, site, stormwater erosion, runoff, and illicit discharge, and now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city of LaGrange, Kentucky as follows: One, that the stormwater ordinances of Oldham County are attached heretofore as an exhibit, and the contents described in those ordinances are hereby fully adopted, approved, and incorporated by reference by the city of LaGrange, as if set out in its entirety herein. See Oldham County Ordinance at 058-30326, 16830348, 04830217. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law, first reading, August 6, 2018, second reading, September 4, 2018.
Thank you, Steve. I entertain a motion on the ordinance 12.
Motion to accept ordinance 12.
Thank you.
A second.
Second. Motion going to public hearing.
Motion to go to public hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone want to come forward on this ordinance? Motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion to go out of public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We, reason we're adopting this, we, we have never adopted ordinance. We actually had a, an agreement with the county. So I get a notice from MS4 Coordinator out of Frankfurt, and she gave me 60 days to, to, for us to adopt the ordinance from the county. It's a must. So if y'all got any discussion on it, that's, that's the main reason we're doing this. So if there's no discussion, we'll have a roll call.
Jason?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Tad?
Yes.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. We need somebody to introduce the first reading for ordinance 13, 2018. Thank you, Tad.
Ordinance 13, 2018, an ordinance amending an ordinance relating to the regulation of alcoholic beverage in the city of LaGrange.
Thank you. City of LaGrange, Kentucky, ordinance 13, series 2018, an ordinance amending an ordinance relating to the regulation of alcoholic beverages in the city of LaGrange. Whereas KRS chapters 242 and 243 permits the city of LaGrange the ability to license and regulate the sale of alcoholic beverages, and the city desires to exercise that authority. Whereas the voters of the city of LaGrange have through special election decided to permit the sale of alcoholic beverages in LaGrange, Kentucky. Whereas the existing ordinance concerning the sale of alcohol contains terms that the city council wants to be changed based on modifications made by the legislature of the Commonwealth of Kentucky, it is necessary to amend portions of the current ordinance. Now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the city of LaGrange, Kentucky, that Section 1.7 issuance of license receipt of fees. All licenses permitted under Kentucky law for a city with a population of the fourth class shall be allowed, and all licenses granted under this chapter shall be approved and issued by the city of LaGrange ABC Administrator. All license fees from licenses issued under this ordinance shall be collected by the city of LaGrange ABC Administrator. All licenses approved by the ABC, the city of LaGrange ABC Administrator and issued by the city shall begin on July 1 of any year and shall expire on June 30 of the following year. All fees that are imposed by KRS 243.030 and 243.040 are to be paid to the Kentucky ABC. In addition to those fees paid to the Kentucky ABC, any licensee engaged in the sale, possession, or distribution of spirituous venus or malt liquors or operating a brew on premises establishment shall pay the following fees to the city of LaGrange ABC Administrator, which are authorized under KRS 243.070, and the fees shall be paid when applicable for a license is made. Fees: One, distilled spirit and wine licenses, retail package, retail drink, temporary restaurant, extended hour licenses; A, rectifier's license, Class A, per annum, $2,580; B, rectifier's license, Class B, per annum, $825; C, brewer's license, per annum, $2,580; D, microbrewery license, per annum, $520; E, wholesalers, distilled spirits and wine license, per annum, $2,060; F, distributor's license, per annum, $520; G, quota retail package license, per annum, $570; H, quota retail drink license- H quota retail drink license, per annum, six twenty. Special temporary license per event, fifty dollars. Special temporary auction license per event, one hundred dollars. K limited restaurant license, per annum, seven hundred and eighty dollars. L limited golf course license, per annum, seven twenty. M qualified historic site license, per annum, one thousand thirty. N extended hour supplemental license, per annum, two thousand sixty. O NQ retail drink license, non quota, per annum, four thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. P NQ two retail drink license, non quota, per annum, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Q NQ three retail drink license, non quota, per annum, three ten, three hundred and ten dollars. R NQ four retail malt beverage license, non quota, per annum, two hundred and ten dollars. S secondary non quota malt beverage retail package license, per annum, fifty dollars. T non quota retail malt beverage package license, non quota, per annum, two ten. U secondary NQ four malt beverage retail drink license, per annum, fifty dollars. V supplemental bar license fee for first five, no additional charge after five. NQ retail drink, eight thirty, limited restaurant, seven eighty. Limited golf course, seven twenty, quota retail drink, six twenty. NQ retail drink, three ten. The qualifying holder of either type of retail malt beverage beer license is either the NQ retail malt beverage drink or the NQ retail malt beverage package license may add the second license for reducing license fee of fifty dollars per annum. Two caterers license. A caterer's license may be issued as a supplementary license to a caterer that holds a quota retail package license, a quota retail drink license, an NQ one license, an NQ two license, or a limited restaurant license. The caterer's license may be issued as a primary license to a caterer in any wet territory and/or any moist territory under KRS two four two point one two four four for the premises that serves as the caterer's commissary and designated banquet hall. No primary caterer's license shall be issued to a premise that operates as a restaurant. The alcoholic beverage stock of the caterer shall be kept under lock and key at the licensed premises during the time that the alcoholic beverages are not being used in conjunction with a catered function. All caterer's licenses shall comply with KRS two four three point zero three three. Caterer's license even a supplementary per annum, eight hundred and thirty dollars. Then you have other, uh, there's a special Sunday retail drink license shall be five twenty per annum. And any licenses issued after January one of any year shall be assessed a fee equal to one half of the annual fee for the remainder of the license period. Section two effective date, this ordinance shall take effect upon its reading, adoption, and publication according to law. Tonight is first reading.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
We have a second reading and public hearing next month's meeting. We got, uh, see where are we? We have, uh, introduction of ordinance fourteen, twenty eighteen for first reading.
Mayor, I'll introduce ordinance fourteen dash twenty eighteen for first reading. An ordinance revisiting, revising the zoning map of the city of LaGrange located at fifteen hundred Fort Pickens Road.
Thank you. Commonwealth of Kentucky, city of LaGrange, ordinance number fourteen, series two thousand eighteen. An ordinance revising the zoning map of the city of LaGrange. Whereas on October one, two thousand eighteen, the LaGrange City Council did conduct a public hearing concerning a request for a zoning map amendment that was heard by the Oldham County Planning and Zoning on July twenty-four, two thousand eighteen, on approximately five point five nine acres located at fifteen hundred Fort Pickens Road in LaGrange, Oldham County, Kentucky. Whereas the Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission did move to approve the zoning map amendment, and that motion carried. Whereas the LaGrange City Council did review the Oldham County Planning and Zoning Commission action and did conduct a public hearing to receive additional evidence and comments. Whereas the LaGrange City Council did vote to approve the zoning map amendment, adopting the findings and reasons and binding elements and support thereof. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of LaGrange, Kentucky as follows. The property approximately five point five nine acres located at fifteen hundred Fort Pickens Road in LaGrange, Oldham County, Kentucky, more particularly described in the attached exhibit A, is changed from a zoning classification of C two, community business district, to C three, general business district. The property described in the attached exhibit from date of passage and publication of this ordinance pursuant to law shall bear the zoning classification of C three. Attached exhibit made apart hereof as if fully set out. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
Thank you, Steve. We'll have the second reading and public hearing on this next month. That's what, October first? We will have the, uh, minutes and planning zonings. Amy, is that correct for next month? Thank you. Takes us to old business, we're getting old business.
I had a question about the Green Space Committee. When is your next scheduled meeting? I know you said you were going on a, uh, I guess review on the nineteenth, but do you guys have a meeting and location that, other than that?
No, we don't have anyone, another one scheduled after that at this point.
Okay.
Correct, Karen. Okay.
And you do have another one, could you? Could you?
No.
No, no, no. Would you mind sending, uh, a, uh, email?
Sure.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Alright, thank you. I don't know if this is old business or new business. I feel like it's more new business. The ordinance committee, uh, meeting, I'd like to propose Wednesday, um, nine twenty-six at six o'clock in the community center, uh, second floor. Does that work for?
That works.
Doesn't work for you?
I'm out of town that week.
The whole week? Alrighty.
Six, yeah, if it's.
How, uh, how about, um, Thursday, the twentieth? Can't do that one? Okay. Well, shoot, um.
Can you do Tuesdays? I can do first thing in the morning several days, but evenings are gonna get, be tough for this month at least. About the twenty-fifth?
I think, Anne, you're out of town that whole week, correct?
Okay.
Alright, um. Is the eighteenth or nineteenth, I know you haven't, meaning, well.
Eighteenth is fine.
Eighteenth, does that work for everyone?
I'm good on the eighteenth.
Work for you, Ann?
Uh, yes, I should be able to make that work.
Okay, alright, so we'll do, um, nine eighteen, so Tuesday.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock, community center, second floor. Thank you.
Something I wanted to bring up, this is gonna be new business. Um, this is the time that there's a lot of grants out there that are available, and I just wanted to bring something up. This would be something that the citizens would have to do. I know we have a lot of potholes around the city that need to be fixed. There's actually a paving for pizza grant from Domino's that is going to be available. And the deadline to file is December thirty-first. So if there's any citizens that would like to go on to pavingforpizza.com and nominate the city of LaGrange for this, and maybe we can get some grant money to help us with our potholes.
Can that be put out on social media?
Not yet, I just found this one today.
Okay.
Mayor, this is under new business as well. Um, an introduction of ordinance fifteen, series two thousand eighteen. An ordinance of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky, requiring registration of cer- certain rental properties.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. City of LaGrange, ordinance number fifteen, series two thousand eighteen. An ordinance of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky, requiring registration of certain rental properties. Whereas the presence of rental properties is on the increase in the city of LaGrange. Whereas it has come to the attention of the city council that several rental property owners are failing to apply for a business license and/or failing to account for income earned for the compensation tax. Whereas it is also important to know how to contact owners of rental property in the event of an emergency. Now therefore be it ordained by the city council, the city of LaGrange, Kentucky. Section one, purpose. Its purpose and intent of this ordinance to establish a rental property registration to apply and enforce other ordinances of the city, and to establish a contact information list in the event of an emergency. Section two, definitions, as used in this ordinance. A, rental property means real property leased by a property owner or owners to others for compensation, whether short term or long term. This includes property of all zoning uses, including but not limited to vacant land, commercial, industrial, and residential property. Section three, registration. A, prior to renting property located in the city of LaGrange, a property owner or owners shall register the property as a rental property with the city clerk's office of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky. B, there shall be a fee of forty dollars per property registered, which shall be paid by the property owner or owners to the city at the time of registration. Section four, enforcement. A, if the rental property owner fails to register the property by November fifteenth or within thirty days of when the property owner acquires title, whichever happens last, the city may issue a citation and impose fines and/or penalties against the property owner for a violation of this ordinance. B, any rental property owner who or that fails to register rental property within the city within the time limit stated in this ordinance shall be subject to a civil penalty as follows. First offense, a fine of fifty dollars if paid within thirty days of citation, and additional fifty dollars if not paid within thirty days of citation, plus interest at the rate of one percent per month compounded monthly. Second offense, a fine of one hundred dollars if paid within thirty days of citation, and additional one hundred dollars if not paid within thirty days of citation, plus interest at the rate of one percent per month compounded monthly. Third offense, a fine of five hundred dollars if paid within thirty days of citation, and additional five hundred dollars if not paid within thirty days of citation, plus interest at the rate of one percent per month compounded monthly. If a civil action is filed to collect an imposed, imposed fine and/or interest or to for equitable relief, then attorney's fees and/or legal costs incurred by the city shall be recovered from the violator and awarded by the city, to the court, to the city by the court, excuse me. Section five, this ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication. First reading, September fourth, two thousand eighteen.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Any more new business coming before the council? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Actually, actually, I had another, I had a question too, Joe. I had a que, or Mayor, I had a question I've meant to ask earlier, and I forgot. This was actually in the financials. Um, going through, actually, the city attorney bills, I just had a question. I know there was a couple of meetings that, uh, our city attorney did not attend, and I do see that that was adjusted here. But I wanted to just ask, I noticed there were some charges on here where we had received an email, and I know we, the city is charged each time we send emails and the emails are read. However, there was an email that was voluntarily sent to us, and we were charged, and the city was charged for that. So do we get charged for that as well, like if you voluntarily send emails out to us?
My understanding is that my staff met with folks over at City Hall, and we've agreed to, uh, not charge that bill, um, against my better, better judgment. But we're, we're not gonna argue over that particular email. That's, that's not of any moment or any concern at this point. We'll agree not to charge the city for that. And I've been told, and I understand from my bookkeeper that that's been adjusted as such on all future billing.
We have two properties that we've sent letters for as unsafe buildings. And per the ordinance, they have to come before city council to explain what their plans are for that property. Um, the first one is two oh seven second, South Second. You guys wanna go ahead and come on up? That is this house. It's a shed at the back of the building, it's in the alley. Go ahead and come on up. And I'm not sure if they're gonna tear it down, what they're gonna do. So, we'll just get an update from them on what they wanna do. You're gonna have it tore down?
I've already tore it down.
Oh, has been torn down? Okay. That's no longer an issue on that one, then, that one's gone.
I just gotta get the debris and stuff out.
Okay. And then the second address was two oh nine South Second Street. Is there anyone here from Oldham County Investments? That's, you were done, thank you very much. This house was involved in a house fire back in July of twenty sixteen. It went into foreclosure, and it was purchased in October of last year, and it has sat vacant ever since then. I'm not sure if the city council wants to try and, I was hoping they would show up today, I sent them a letter so they could tell us if they were going to repair it, fix it, what their plans were. But it has been sitting empty since July of twenty sixteen. They do.
They do?
They do.
Have you heard from them, anything from them at all?
No, I tried to call them beforehand, and I could not, I left messages, could not get a response. So therefore I sent them a letter asking them to respond to city council. As per ordinance, that's what we're supposed to do. And they obviously did not show up today. What are our options if they don't respond? We could. We have no option. Demolish it. Okay. Demolish it or fix it up, or, you know, but demolish it. I don't know what the ordinance states, if we have to vote on, you know, if we have to give it two readings, or what we have to do.
There's, there is a process for it, Jean. We followed it very recently with the Casey matter. And there are deadlines within the ordinance built in for their opportunity for appeal.
I was hoping they were gonna be here tonight.
Have you sent them letters, or have you talked to them, they're not responding?
I called them up messages, and I sent a letter, and they've not responded. It was, it has to be before ten days, but not more than thirty days. So it was this past month. So we'll table that and bring it back next month and see where we can go.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we table it and then let them know that we're gonna hold a hearing on it?
Yes.
October?
And then on old business, sixteen eighteen Cedar Springs Court, that was brought up last month. Um, I'm happy to report the house is now completely empty. It has been cleaned out. By the end of next week, they should have an appraisal for it. And then within sixty days, it should be listed for sale. Um, I have reiterated to the mortgage company that they need to stress to whoever purchased this property, it cannot sit vacant. It needs, whoever buys it needs to immediately start acting upon, doing something with it because it is still under order from the city council to be demolished. So she said that she would make sure that that is stressed in the contract, that whoever buys it needs to act immediately, for whatever good that will do.
So they gonna put it up for sale, you're saying?
Within sixty days, it'll be for sale.
Within sixty days from?
Into next week, they'll have the appraisal done. And then within sixty days, they'll have it up for sale.
Do we have a plan if it doesn't sell, or? I mean, is?
We've got this.
Is sixty days the deadline for it to sell, or?
No, that's when they, they'll have it listed for sale. The mortgage company will have it listed for sale, within sixty days.
Alright, got you.
Of getting their appraisal back, and that should be, the appraisal should be returned to them by the end of next week.
Any updates on Sumac Alley?
The city attorney's office has given me the forms, and in the process of getting those signed by the homeowners to get, uh, the affidavits to get them that they agree to it. They all agree to it, I just don't have all the forms back yet.
Thank you.
Also been surveyed?
It has been surveyed.
If the council didn't know?
Yes, it has been surveyed. Steve has given me the forms, I'm just waiting on all the signatures.
Can you go back to the Cedar Springs thing? So, um, I'm just curious, since we did vote to demolish it, but that hasn't happened. So, um, now if it goes up for sale and somebody purchases it, and as far as what we voted on, would that have to be stricken? So it doesn't get torn down? Okay.
We could request them to, I guess, when it sells then, we can request them to come before city council with their plan. Or this is what we're gonna do.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm, that's part of my question is, so we voted over a year ago to demolish it, but I- but I don't understand, I know there's other forces that have been in play here with the, the, I guess, the mortgage lender, or, I'm, I'm not, I don't understand why it hasn't been torn down, where we've voted on another property and it was torn down previously, um, around the same time, I guess, a year, or a year and a half ago. Hmm, I don't, I don't want the city of La Grange to be in the business of tearing people's properties down, but, um, just because, you know, we've had two in this packet. But, you know, we, we had, I guess, reasonable cause to, to make that determination back then on Cedar Spring. I'm just a little confused on why it didn't happen and then what would happen if it does sell?
See, and that was, that process all started before I got here. So I know that at one point, the US Attorney's Office got involved and it's a USDA mortgage, and so they had asked for time.
Lots of liens, I remember.
They had asked for time. And then it had to go through the court system for the foreclosure procedure. And they did fast track it through, um, they did get a default judgment on that. Then they had to give the family a certain amount of time to get in there and get personal belongings out. That date came and went, nobody came in. So unfortunately, it's just been that kind of a process where everything just takes time.
It's hard to compare the two of Batanzas Court to this one because there wasn't any errors.
Yeah, Batanzas Court, she passed away back in two thousand and nine and had been sitting empty since two thousand and nine. There was no mortgage company, there was nobody coming forward.
So, yeah, just explain to you, Trey, that's the difference in, in the two.
I understand there were less players involved with that one in particular. Um, I mean, I can't say I've driven by the Cedar Springs one a few times since, especially, you know, over the, the summer. And I, I can't say that they did, somebody has buttoned it up better than what it was.
I've stayed on them, I do, and I was doing inspections every week going by, making sure it was secure, making sure the grass was mowed, and I was staying on them to make sure that was, that was happening.
The mortgage company actually hired a company to.
Service it.
Service it, to take care of it. They, the mortgage company actually hired someone.
Is there, uh?
More or less.
Is there a time limit that the mortgage company has to sell it? I mean, you know, they could keep it at a price and it could sit there for two years. I know it's a good market right now, but.
Right. Um, after seeing the interior of it, I don't think, I mean, I think they're gonna have to take a loss on it. I don't know what they still owe, but it's in really rough shape. Really, really rough shape. So whoever comes in is gonna have to gut the whole thing and just start fresh. So they're going to have to take a loss. I mean, it's up to you guys as the city council. If you wanna say, okay, list it, and after thirty days, if it doesn't sell, come up with a better plan, whatever you guys wanna do.
I guess that's kinda what I'm asking, so would we have to amend what we have with the current demolition order? I'm, I don't.
Do something on the record to either modify it or rescind it completely.
Because I feel like right now, because that's the way we voted, it should be torn down regardless if they wanna sell the property or not, unless they, I guess, showed their intention of, um, rehabbing something or, or got it up to a certain standard.
And it, that probably will come down to a, a decision of council, what's in your best interest? Is it better to, uh, have a property that's back on the rolls and, and good or a vacant property that you spent thousands of dollars to demolish the residence? I mean, uh, that's a, that's a decision, we'll have to weigh the facts when we have the facts. I don't have enough.
Yeah, if someone's willing to purchase it, I don't see why we would wanna spend thousands of dollars to demolish it.
We got estimates, it would be, it would be just under twenty thousand.
Yeah, so I don't see why we'd wanna spend that if someone, if there's a buyer there.
And I, I guess I'm, maybe I'm not remembering it correctly, but I, I mean, I, I know our ordinance was, if, if the bank or the mortgage holder does not appeal, we will demolish. So it seems like since they appealed and have a plan put forward, doesn't that then just negate our plan to demolish?
If that's the language, we'll wanna review the minutes from that to ensure what it was said.
That was sort of how I'm remembering it, that, you know, they, they had thirty or sixty days to respond, and if there was no response, then we would demolish, and they responded.
I think they, yeah, they responded within the timeframe, and since then, it's just a slow process.
Since we're on the subject, I had asked, but what's happened to Batanzas Court lot? Is it somebody taking care of it or?
Well, the city, up until this point, has been going through and mowing every couple weeks to keep the grass down. The neighbors are mowing part of it, then the city has to go in and mow the rest. Um, I had last, I sent an email to Steve's office on August ninth for an update, and I haven't heard anything. The last update I got was on June sixth.
So is that property now city property?
No, we're working on seizing it. I mean, that's, that's our plan.
Because if we seize it, then.
There's been nobody to gain service on.
So if we seize it, then we could s- see if each neighbor wants to buy and then recoup our money for the demolish?
Yeah, we, I don't have any. The last update I have on that is that the owner died without a will, the heirs won't come forward. There's seven years of delinquent county taxes that have been purchased by various companies. There's also two current open foreclosure matters involving this property. Um, last I heard that Michelle or Steve were gonna speak with Andrew regarding a cross claim, counterclaim. And I haven't received an update since then, so.
And the cross claim, counterclaim is in the second matter because the city was named as a defendant in that matter. And so we have to set up our claims again, and we have to point out, which we did to the court, that there already is another foreclosure pending on the Saint Peace property. The bank that is coming after this one, I think, was on a, some kind of a line of credit. And, uh, for whatever reason, they didn't catch that there was already a suit filed and we didn't find it in the lien books either, so it was a mystery to all of us. So now there are two of them out there. Eventually, they'll need to be consolidated, but we still are facing the same issues in the second foreclosure with that new plaintiff. They're not able to affect service on the necessary parties to have a foreclosure happen.
And then the other property we have is that three oh nine West Main. We did clean that up before Oldham County days so that it would look nice. And the city is, every couple weeks, maintaining by going over and at least mowing the front yard, so it does look nicer, but that one's still tied up. I guess we were last waiting on Michelle to get proof of service. That was again on August ninth, and I haven't heard anything more since then, so I don't know where that stands.
Can you help me out, what does proof of service mean?
When they mail something, certified mail, she has to make sure that it was delivered, proof that it was delivered.
You get a green card back from the post office if they deliver it.
Yes, okay.
And then if they don't deliver it, you get it back and says they couldn't deliver it. And then sometimes you don't get anything.
It was a lien or something that somebody had bought from somebody else, and so we had to reserve those people. But that was the final one that had to be served. So I'm not sure where that stands after that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Stephen.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand up.